Go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you have one of these on you, please turn it to silence so we don't have phones ringing during the meeting. And join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if anyone out there would like to address the board, there's forms to fill out in the back and you can hand them to Mr. Schumaker. He's the gentleman with the nice, pretty child. And I will call the roles. Our district attorney, Mr. Pierce is here. Supervisor Tinkle, supervisor Banks, supervisor Feinberg, supervisor Guy, supervisor Flaherty, our district managers, Chris Schumaker is here, and our accountant, Stephen Blum is here. And with that, do we have people that want to address the board?
Yes, we have two speakers today. The first would be John Payne, Timber Ridge Drive.
Hi, again, my name is John Payne and we live in Timber Ridge. This is a neighbor of mine. We have an issue between Daniels Preserve and Timber Ridge. There's a fence all the way across here between us except right at the end of the lake. And we have a lot of people coming through there going to 7-Eleven or playing basketball or whatever. And they fish in our yards and it's clearly not allowed with our association, but they don't listen. It's becoming out of hand. And I'm wondering, the question is, can we build a fence at the end of that lake?
Daniels Preserve and?
Daniels Preserve and Timber Ridge.
Chris, would it be in the LME?
I'll have to look.
We have tons of fence in the LME and if we have to work in there, we'd just take them down. But at the issue of who builds it would be a HOA issue, not a CDD issue. Your HOA would have to install the fence.
I talked to him yesterday. He said there was new people who are in charge of fences.
I'd try the same thing, but that's not the case. Yeah. I've tried that. I've been on the other side.
It's a council ball here.
Yeah, it's an HOA issue if you want to put up a fence in your area. But the only thing we've got to do is just make sure that it's not restrictive to the lake management easement, which we have dozens of fence in the LME. And if we have to get in there, they just come down.
Yeah, no, there shouldn't be any issue, but like I said, there's fences all around except right there. And that's where everybody comes through, through our backyard and they become abusive and you know, and they challenge it. Something needs to be done, so I'll bring it up with me.
Could I show you your math a moment, Chris?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Payne, I'll pull the original engineering plan for that subdivision, just so we can take a look at what's on the end there and just find it, you know, whose property and where the LME is and.
Yeah, the question is, why would they have terminated the fence and left it out other than the LME? That's the only thing that makes sense.
We'll find out.
But we have, we have tons of fence going across to LMEs that, that, that doesn't stop anything. Just the only issue is, is that if we have to go in there and do work, then the fence might have to come down to be able to, I, I can't picture it being that big of an idea.
Just like you, as we're talking. Is that doing it? Or do you know if that's?
It's between Daniels Preserve, must be right in here.
And there's a fence here?
Is it Daniels now here?
Yeah.
So it's Daniel's Preserve. If you talk to somebody.
Yeah, it's got to be right there.
Okay. Oh, so they're cutting through to get to 7-Eleven. Um, Bob. I'll come to a second minute.
What's?
What company?
What company?
Oh, you mean the property manager?
Yeah. Tropical?
It just changed names. It was Castle and then it changed names. His name is Neil.
Not Tropical?
No.
Not Lion?
No, it just changed hands for the family. Okay. Okay, so let me take this out with the board?
I, if I were your position, I would go back to your property manager and your board, let them know to coordinate with Chris. But the issue of who would put the fence in and everything, that would be your HOA that would have that responsibility.
I mean, I think for nine years, we brought it up with the previous board and nothing was out of them. Recently, it's got a lot worse. And where I live on the corner, they come over, they come through the fence and come walking through. My husband works away a lot, sorry, and late at night, you know, I don't want to have these people walking through my yard fishing, you know? And I say, I'm extremely polite, you know? And I say, do I know you, sir? And they'll say, no. And I'll say, will you respect my property that not fishing in my backyard? And a lot of the time, they'll say, you can't stop us. And I'll say, this is my yard. You can fish in the common area if you live on Timber Ridge Drive. But if you don't, which you don't, because I've seen you come through the gap, you know, and it's quite obvious that there's a huge gap there. And I just don't know why it was never, you know, done right the way across. And it just seems to be getting worse and affecting, and they're being abusive, some of them, you know?
We've had the same thing over Gateway Greens, so we put up the fence. That's all you can do.
Yeah.
The figure is clearly in our association that we cannot fish at the back of anyone's property. Article 50, we're telling that and if there's an easement, we could do what we want.
We even passed a rule to that effect about a month ago.
Yeah. Okay.
It's the HOA's, yeah, it's the HOA's issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
One more speaker, Mr. Phil Measy wanted to talk about agenda item 5B and D.
Phil Measy, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. I live at 9296 Tri-S Drive in Pelican Preserve. I have read Darren McMurray's letter of October 30th, 2017, to the board concerning Pelican Preserve transfer of assets. While I have limited knowledge of the statutes and regulations governing such transfers, I suspect that Mr. McMurray makes some valid assertions in his letter. From its perspective, there are issues that the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee believes the board should consider in making its decision concerning asset transfers in Cypress Grove. Most importantly, there are assets related to the roads that are to be turned over that are not covered by the permit criteria manual and thus, and thus do not appear on the district engineer's punch list. These include deficiencies in the condition or installation of monuments, lighting, landscaping, some of which give rise to safety issues as well. While it is true that the P-PAC came somewhat late to the process of reviewing these assets, we raised concerns about some of them over a year ago. The question that arises is whether items that were not included in the official turnover inspection process, but are not in reasonable condition or result in safety issues, should be accepted without some provision for correction for, for the problems that have been found. If this occurs, Pelican Preserve residents will be burdened with costs for corrections that the P-PAC believes should be paid for by the developer. In addition to the items above, the P-PAC has also done its own inspections of certain assets covered by the permit criteria manual and found numerous problems with roads and curbs. There are also required ponds-related inspections for which the P-PAC's ponds work group has not seen any results. P-PAC believes that there need to be provisions to address these issues as part of any turnover process. The P-PAC thinks it should be possible for the board and Lennar to develop a reasonable accommodation to expedite the turnover process by including stipulations that address the concerns of Pelican Preserve residents, including timeframes in which deficiencies will be corrected, to protect the residents from shouldering costs that should rightfully belong to the developer. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, go right ahead.
Phil, at this point in time, what recommendation are you bringing forward to the CDD?
Well, Bill, I, I don't, I don't know that there's any good way to do this, but it would seem to me that one process that we could follow possibly is to have a team of people representing the CDD, P-PAC, and the developer go out and look at all the properties that they want transferred and make decisions about which things need to be corrected and have an agreement as part of the transfer process about those items that need to be corrected and when they will be corrected, because timeframes are important. Very often, WCI has promised things and it just goes on forever until it just dies. So I, I think we need to, to have everybody identify those things, because there are things, I think, hopefully, that even Lennar will agree need correction before they're transferred. And if we can get some kind of a stipulation or agreement that they will be fixed either pre or post-transfer, then I think we could put ourselves in a, in a fairly satisfactory position. So that, that would be my recommendation.
I'm reading your comments, which mean you're not recommending that we accept the transfers of these properties at this time.
Not until we have some agreement as to what needs to be fixed. And, and Lennar has said, okay, we'll fix these things. And, and when, when the transfer was made at the last meeting of Materita 2A, I guess it was, there was, you know, there is, is a provision in there in the, in the bond money to, to correct some of the curb problems. We discovered that in that particular case, there are no substantial landscaping problems, so that was not an issue. But there are landscaping problems, there are other problems in some of the other areas. And I think there needs to be, at the very least, even if there is a transfer, some kind of an agreement that things will be corrected by the developer that are the developer's responsibility. I understand that if it's a maintenance issue, maintenance is the responsibility or will be the responsibility of, of the CDD. But in cases where the original installation of the particular thing or, or the way, way it was done is not correct, that needs to be corrected before we accept it or before, or it needs to be corrected afterwards at the developer's expense, one way or the other. That would be my suggestion.
To me, our problem is, is that we don't have a good delineation of typical construction-related terms like substantially complete and fully complete. Typically, on projects I've been associated with, you have substantial completion. At the point you have substantial completion, a couple of things are met. One, the product is usable. The second thing is, is it sets up a time for a punch list of things to be taken care of, generally 90 days. Then you go into full completion, the contractor's paid off, and the bond covers, covers everything else. Our problem is, we aren't going through that process. I don't know that we have anything to allow us to go through unless and until we make a change to the permit criteria manual. At this point in time, the, the bigger question I have is, Tony, can we legally accept these facilities pursuant to the bond and have conditioned on that or attach to that a list of the deficiencies that we have identified at the time of acceptance?
Exactly.
In other words, it's, it's, it's a cover your you-know-what.
That's right. Exactly. And if, if we could do that and not, not only have what needs to be corrected, but when they will be corrected.
To me, that's a happy medium.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the bond to see, to make sure we're not waiving any right as to that list of deficiencies. If we're accepting it in a condition except for those deficiencies, and by the way, typically in the, in these conveyances, there's a bill of sale for the improvements and there's a one-year warranty for any defects.
But the problem is, and this is the nightmare we have with this.
Enforcement of warranties.
No, well, yeah, but even more importantly, are the things that aren't mentioned landscaping, monuments, things like that, those things are right now are in never, never land.
Exactly. Because they're not covered by the bond, are they?
They're not covered.
Well, one way possibly, and maybe, and I don't know if Lennar or WCI would be amenable to, is when you make that list to get them to agree that, and the items you're talking about, the monuments, the signs, and landscaping all be covered in, in the bill of sale and in the warranty.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to know from the bonding people that when we take a bond, let's say Casella 1 and 2, are, is that bond inclusive of those things that may not specifically be mentioned that we have checked, i.e. landscaping?
Probably not, because the bond is typically tied to the schmittel made to the district of, in our approval.
Then can we request a bond for those items only then? In other words, we'll take the, the stuff, but the other items that are, we're being asked to take over, we want a separate bond for if they're not inclusive. I don't think that's a reason.
If they're not included in the current bond.
If they're not included in the current bond.
And I'm going to ask you to hold your thought on that.
Okay.
Because this is on the agenda and we're kind of getting ahead.
Okay. I want to just get in ahead of that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak?
No, that's all.
All right.
Regarding a non-agenda item, can I speak for just a moment?
You have to fill out a card out. Speaker's in the back.
After the fact.
And do I wait? Can I get some time then? I'm not sure what that process is.
Just fill out a card out, come on up.
Yeah, come on up and get it over with.
Here it is.
There, you can stand up there and give your name and.
Okay. My name is Chris O'Hern. I live in Pinewood Lakes. And the only reason I was asked to come today is to just try to get a feel from you guys as to how we're doing on the expanded RV storage facility. We have, I think, 22 spots right now for a community of, I don't know how many, we have, 4,000 residents. And I understand that we have something like 60 people on a waiting list willing to pay the money that's been set up on the website. You know, it's, there's a certain square foot, linear foot, all of that. We've got 60 people wanting to pay that money right now to our group, but we don't have a spot. So we're 60, I think, if somebody, Vicki might know, I don't know who Vicki is on our, in our team here, but she said there was about 60. I think I'm 63 on a waiting list. And in this facility, I think there's 22 spots. They haven't, I don't, do you guys know anything about an expansion or are we going to expand that park? Somebody talk to me about maybe doing something behind the park.
I'll just address it quickly.
Sure.
And Danny's here with Tetra Tech and they've been working on a permit for the drainage and for that facility. And I believe if it hasn't been submitted, it'll be submitted in the next few days. Board has not budgeted the construction money for that yet, but it'll take about 60 days to get the permitting.
So 60 days for the permit, we got to figure out the money part. How much is it going to cost to put fences around it?
Well, we have a pretty good idea. They've done an preliminary design and it's.
Is that public information, what that cost is?
I don't think it's been totally.
If I'm just doing some math quick, like 60 people at $100, $150 a month.
Yeah, we've gone through all the math. We've gone through the cost analysis and, and, yeah, quite some variations. So we, just to fill you in, there's been, this has been an ongoing evaluation and design. So we're at a point now, we've had cost analysis justification, kind of a business case. Tetra Tech has come up with a couple of different design options. So we're in permitting now and the next step would be to just approve a final design element and then, and then get, get moving from there. So we're, we have a plan in place. It's in motion. What's TBD is actually when it would be approved and construction would start and be completed.
Any clue, you know, just for us planning, because we're having to make arrangements for RVs and trailers and boats and stuff to be put into other facilities, not here in Gateway. Only 22 people are allowed to do that here. Do we have a timeline, are we with years, early months, or what, what, I mean, you said 60 and then we knew 90 on construction. I mean, just any feel, you guys, is it a 2018 type of deal or is it going to be 2029 or?
Mike, do you want to?
Somewhere in between.
We're going to default to Mike.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager. We are, that was one of my items today, just to talk to you about moving forward with the, the design and, and you getting the concurrence to issue the check for the development order. To answer your question, we, we don't have that money, we don't have the construction budgeted right now. So, I mean, that would be something that the board would have to look at, or we look at budgeting that amount next year, but we don't, we don't have those dollars budgeted for the, the construction of the, the facility out there.
And that said, that's including the monies that's lost every single month right now. They're not constructing it. It's going to other storage facilities, other communities.
I'd say the best case scenario would be, it would be 2018, you know, earliest would be, you know, probably Q3, end of next year or 2019. But more will come in probably the next month or two as we finalize the budget. So if we got to pinpoint a timeframe, because it'll be, have to, the dollars will have to be approved and we put on the plan for 2018 and we'd have to sequence it as well.
Okay.
So if you can just be patient for another month or so, if you're looking for a plan, I'd say plan ahead for at least the next six months.
Okay. All right. And then will we be able to get up to see or just show up at these meetings or?
Yeah, we'll provide an update.
How do we progress?
Yeah, sure.
And I'll be on the website or something maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Do you want to put this out?
Please, thank you.
And I think we can update that as we move forward with the development order process and then just talk about that on the, the website. We can put something in there concerning that.
Did you guys identify a play sport as well? Is it right here?
Behind the soccer, the last soccer.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it. Appreciate it.
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. You have an updated task memo, which Mrs. Flaherty asked if we would continue to bring this before the board, so if you have any questions on that.
I'm sorry, I did hear that, Danny.
I just, the only item we have in here is the memo that we prepared on our task. So if you have any questions on that, I don't think, I went through it last time. It's just simply updated. What you'll see in green is, at the top of each task is the current status and then I put action items in red. And this is essentially where our projects stand.
I think a question I've got for Chris and maybe Kenny is, are we in a position on the hydraulic modeling to go out and get that information to be able to complete that model? Because that's certainly a, a critical item. We're in a position to do that?
Well, I think where you sit with that is, that hasn't been authorized, so Chris needed to review the.
Who, who has to authorize it?
Well, board authorized a contingent upon Chris reviewing the previous model information and that's, that's where that sits at.
And that would be to finish the 2014-06 portion and then it's an additional project to update all the new developments since that time.
Yeah, I think the, the key that I'm hearing is, is that you can't do anything more until we've provided that modeling input information. Is that correct?
We can't do anything until we have authorization. I don't have an authorization yet.
But, but if you had an authorization, you have to wait for us to give you the information to continue the work.
There is, there is, there's some work that we can do. I mean, infrastructure's been put in the ground since that model was.
Oh, that's right. We had to, we had to put that in.
Right. But, you know, that's probably, that's a minor part of that, of that project.
There.
But, but certainly the, the data collection, the, the pressure data and the calibration is what will take the time, because, you know, we'd like to see the pressure data over, you know, a week or so period and we'll probably want to move those, those pressure points to a couple of different locations.
Well, on the basis then, that I'm, I'm not hearing staff saying anything that they're not going to perform that modeling and that calibration information, then I see no reason why we wouldn't go, want to go on ahead and proceed with the authorization of this work So I'd make the motion that, at least for that item, hydraulic modeling, that.
I don't think you need to make a motion. The motion was made at the last meeting. It was just contingent upon Chris reviewing.
So do we need to do anything?
No, it's just Chris needs to finish his review and then if he's satisfied with that, then just need to authorize us. But, but to your point, staff can certainly move forward with putting, you know, the data loggers in the field.
Well, we're, we're going into the triseason and the irrigation systems are going to start popping on and running, maybe one of these days it stops raining. And we need to be in a position to know where that water's coming from and where we have shortages. Last thing I want to do is have a line of people coming in complaining about pressure like we hear almost every year on the irrigation system. So if we have some deficiencies, we need to know it. The loop line we put in certainly has to be inputted, but on the other side, the two major lines that were put in to Pastoya and Preto, that's going to impact us up on that end. So we need to get that study going as quick as possible.
Yeah, I will, I'll say that, you know, the time is good. Probably, you know, even a month from now will be better as far as the irrigation to get pressure information because while.
They'll be on.
While it's in operation, yeah. So if you have any other questions on the memo.
I do. I have a question on, did we, did we lose the November meeting on the lake bank?
No, we, we saved it.
We did save it?
Yes.
Okay. I want, I wanted, I'm glad to hear that. I was concerned.
We're good there. We, um, we had a lot of discussions with DEP and expressed, you know, how important this was. So they've, they've got it on the agenda. We've met with Mike and gone over comments. There's some additional work that he wants us to do. I think we talked about it at the last meeting where some of that includes getting some bathymetric survey. So we're actually still waiting on price from, to perform bathymetric surveying of those additional ponds. So as soon as we get that, we'll be able to, to finish that work up. But no, we're, we're on, so we've, we've saved that.
And Chris, can we, can we take this, this document and if you can add to it where, you know, where it's assigned? So if it's a, if it's a utilities piece, we assign it to Mike and then just update where we're at? Because I would imagine you're going to, some of these need to go through kind of your review to be either brought back to the board for an action. I see there are some comments, but if there, if all those actions are under, under your oversight, then that's, that's fine. But it might help us stay on task with where we're at with these individual items.
And part of why, and we can do this monthly, we can do it for each meeting. We used to do these and then, then the board did not want to spend the money for us to prepare these. So we can do it monthly, we can do it, you know, every meeting. But part of, of why we brought this one back, we had it at the last meeting, part of why we brought it back at this meeting is, is Mrs. Flaherty had, you know, pointed out that some of the items that may not be happening, we're, we're waiting on information that if it was in something before the board, then if action needed to take place, then.
Yeah, I agree. We need to, we need to go to action and check these things off or strike them out as we decide.
You had a comment?
Yes, I want to thank you, Mr. Nelson. I do appreciate this report on the tax. I think because it does keep us informed and I really would like to continue this.
I think monthly is probably adequate. Just to keep us up to date.
Sorry.
What you need, go ahead.
And the one addition I would make is, I just want to know who's, from a staff perspective, who's, who's owning that particular item and get an update on where we, where we sit.
Just like staff contact.
Yeah.
I mean, I, if you want, I can add, you know, who the staff.
Yeah, just go ahead with Chris and.
Danny, on the Pelican Preserve stormwater database, you say Tetra Tech is holding awaiting documents from a developer. What are you waiting on?
This is just from their completion of inspection, so it's, there's, there's really nothing on that item. It's just, it's just a data entry item. But outside of that, if you don't have any more questions or comments on this, we did have a meeting this morning with the South Florida Water Management District. Really, we wanted to hold a meeting with them to talk about, now that, you know, a month or so has passed since Irma and since this was the wettest year recorded in history of Southwest Florida. We just wanted to talk about.
It was the wettest wet season ever.
Wettest wet, according to the paper, yes.
The wettest wet.
Yes.
To quote.
To quote, yeah.
So, you know, we, we obviously saw a few things from this, this past year. The good thing is that, you know, I think what a lot of residents don't realize who aren't in the business, that don't, don't sit on the board or they don't sit where we sit on dealing with drainage systems is, I think somebody comes to buy a home, especially in a community, they know that it's designed for stormwater, so they expect to see dry everywhere except in the ponds. What they don't realize is that your roads are designed to flood typically after a five-year storm event. And so I think a lot of people are now realizing that, but when you sit down with, you know, your developer, you sit down with your real estate broker for that developer, I don't think that's something that's really, you know, commonly shed to the homeowner. So.
You mean the realtors don't tell them that?
And I'm not saying that they should. And I'm not saying that they should, I'm not, I'm not blaming them, I'm just saying it's not their business, so it's not really something that
Something like, having a boat would be beneficial?
So, you know, given that, and given that we had summer between, well, we had the wettest wet year and we had summer between a 25 and 100 year storm event, just eight, nine, 10 days before we had an actual 100 year storm event, systems aren't designed to accommodate, you know, back-to-back storm events like that. So, all in all, our system really did perform, you know, well, but even with that, I think we saw some things that could be improved, some things that were part of the original design concept, but that never were part of the original permit, and that is putting in gates to allow you to let water out during a storm event. So we did talk to the Water Management District about that, as well as some related items with downstream conveyances and restrictions such as I-75s, culverts, tree line, and then the issue that happened where flow backed up from the airport through the future Timber Creek area into Cypress K. So with that, they definitely are amenable to allowing gates to be installed with two, two caveats. One is they would want to see modeling performed to show that if water was released, that it would not have any downstream impacts. And two, with that, we wouldn't have the authority just to go and do that before a storm event, especially before a rain event, you would do it before a major storm, and they would be part of that decision, which I think is, you know, is fine. Again, this is the wettest wet year we've had and it functioned, so I think their ability to participate in that was good. So, I think at some point, if that's something that this board wants to consider, then you would have to look at doing, developing a model to model that there would be no downstream impacts and then go through the permitting process to install gates. Now, the benefit to that is, in addition to having, having the gates, this same model would tell you what kind of issues you might have at, at I-75 or possibly a tree line. And, you know, the, the Water Management District acknowledges that when these, when the basins were set up back in the 80s, it was more or less a projection of what they felt that boundary was, and for our case, it was 5299 acres, that's now increased to 7,000, that's a significant increase, and we're trying to push all this flow through two 48 inch culverts at I-75. So it would help us tell, help tell us what problems we're actually having there, so.
The real interesting thing on this, and they couldn't explain it, was is that people here talk to people that are around this area, and a lot of the people around this area live in Arborwood and Pelican, or Plantations, they were dry as a moan. And we both go in to Six Mile Cypress. And their deal is, why? Well, the one thing that we have in common is that we both go under I-75. And it's interesting, the size of our I-75 opening and their I-75 opening, when you consider that we're maybe as much as three times their area. So there's things that we need to look at and other parties are going to be involved, and they even indicated that what we need to do is probably get all these parties, Lee, Lee County, for example, one of the issues that we brought up today is, is that we can sit here and do all kinds of miraculous things here, fixing our system, and there are things we can do, but if we can't get the water into Six Mile Cypress, it doesn't do any good. So I suggested and got my head handed to me on a platter of dredging the Six Mile Cypress Slough. Well, that must be something close to hallowed ground, because the environmentalists aren't going to let you dredge that slough. But they did indicate, they're working with the county and we need to talk to them, a 10 mile canal, that's man-made. So if we can get 10 mile canal, perhaps we can get the water out of Six Mile Slough, get it down to Estero Bay, and we in the forest and all those people down there on South 41 can get rid of this water. But the one thing I pointed out to them today is, just because these things were designed to flood, or bad word, back up, in a five-year storm, doesn't mean it has to. Doesn't mean it has to. If we can take and put in conveyances to, to avoid that, for example Hampton Park, lowering the weir, today it was like a, a new revelation to them that the basin that we went into wasn't the basin it was designed for, it's a foot lower. So we can take a foot out of Hampton Park right now. That foot was the difference between those streets being up there, being a canal and being dry. So there's things we can do, and they were amenable to listen, listening to it. But like Danny says, it is going to result in the need of redoing the modeling that probably should have been done in Gateway the minute we found out that that airport property was coming into our community. We should have, well, first of all, we should have screamed like a pig under a gate to ever even allowed them to put those culverts in, but we didn't know it. Now, our engineer knew it at that time, but it, it happened. Not them.
Yeah, I was going to say, for the record, you need
Our prior engineer, yes.
There it was.
And he fought it, he fought it.
They fought it.
They fought it, but they lost. And we suffer. The water that goes out of the airport goes out at elevation 25, we're setting at elevation 24, you tell me which way the water's going to go?
Is it feet?
Feet, elevation 25. It's not going to go out there, where it's going to come through us, and that's exactly what happened in these last two storms. And it killed us at the school property, which was underwater, and it killed us at Timber Creek, which was underwater, and all that came into Gateway. So we just, we got to stop that, so. But they were unamenable, that was, that was big. We got further than we've ever gotten before with them.
Once again, the meeting between the district representative, engineering, and Pelican wasn't, after John made aware of the meeting, we would like to be a part of this meeting, even if we're told not to talk, we want to have a seat at the table.
Well, the meeting was kind of impromptu.
If there's enough to give you an answer, call to me if you need.
So that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Jim, you had a comment quickly, please, so we can, we need to move on to district council.
I'll be very quick, thank you Margaret, Jim Brand, Hampton Park. I appreciate the comment about the design was set up so that our streets and our yards were flooded, would flood. That is the design for a five-year, 20, I lived in St. Louis in 1993 and we had a 500 year flood, a 500 year flood. We had lots of people lose their homes. A 500 year flood is a lot different than a 25 or 100 year water. We need to have our systems designed to meet a 500 year criteria, not a five year, not a 100 year. The comments about adjustable weirs, about capacity underneath Interstate 75, getting canals dredged, that will help make that happen, giving you all the authority to lower weirs when a storm's coming. We don't need another bureaucracy on top of you, you guys have all the talent and all the capacity necessary to make those decisions. We don't need South Florida Water Management District telling you, oh, I'm sorry, you can't lower the weirs. That's not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. District Council?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, the first item is a discussion and possible consideration of the board giving direction for preparation of a policy concerning the acquisition, placement, maintenance and use of automatic external defibrillators, also known as AEDs. And this was an item that was first brought to the board, my memorandum was back in 2016, basically the end of 2015, almost two years ago, and it was discussed at that time, and the board at that time did not make a determination to go ahead. And I think that since that time, passage of time and passage of events, there's been an interest in bringing this topic back up for possible consideration because of the positive aspects, there's negative, I mean, unfortunately, as I mentioned, back, back in January 2016 and other board meetings, the Florida Supreme Court has taken a statute meant to protect people and kind of turned it on its head, unfortunately. And that's that Lamone's case that you saw, that came out of Lee County. And if the board decides that it wishes to have AEDs at the district offices or at the district, at the commons, the recommendation is that there be policies in place, adequate training, and that's what's key, acquisition, training and maintenance, making sure it's accessible, the cabinets are locked, the batteries are operating, the machine is operating, because that's where you get into trouble if you can't use or attempt to use the AED, that's where you lose that second layer of protection under that one act. Interestingly, there was a recent experience, I was reading, I think, or NBC2 or News Press a week or so ago, at a particular facility, I think here in either Kyler or Lee County, where but for an AED, a person would have, you know, suffered a catastrophic event. So again, I'll link to the board for their discussion, and if the board gives direction to the staff, manager and council, we'll come back with a proposed policy for the acquisition, placement, maintenance and use.
Hey Tony, one question, I think there was some additional documentation in what you provided, was there something that mandated AEDs for, was it high school?
Well, my recommendation is that, as to the Gateway Charter, it, I just, at times, certain plaintiffs' lawyers may try to make, create dots, connect dots that don't exist.
Yeah.
And one of them might be that, okay, the, if you're an educational system, an educational facility, and you have an athletic program, then you need to have these AEDs in place in your facility. Gateway Charter uses our soccer complex, and someone could try to argue that they then, they Gateway Charter would need to have, or AEDs would need to be available for the Gateway Charter folks during the time that they are using our soccer field.
Yeah, and that's
Not the other organization events, but it's Gateway Charter.
That's the point of clarification I'm looking for, is, does the, the Florida High School Athletic Association or the, whatever the sanctioning body is, does it, does it specifically call out that at an event where they are the host, doesn't that necessarily have to be on their facilities or away? If they're the host, are they required to have such devices on, onsite?
See, I have to go back, I didn't go back and reread all of that.
And you need to take that away, that's
That's right.
If you don't have an answer today.
Why can't we, with our agreement with them, just require it?
We could.
Be done with it?
That's what my point would be.
We could, yeah.
If we determine that it's not a direction that we want to take, if it's mandated by the high school.
Well, yeah, a school-sponsored sanctioned activity, that's when the first
They would have to provide it.
Correct.
I was just trying to determine what
Yeah, and in that instance, the Supreme Court interpreted the act that, you know, could create unintended liability for the school-sponsored activities at their facilities. And in this case, because they're using ours, someone could try to extend it further.
Yeah, okay.
Seeing this, I called the country club, because we added AEDs around the golf course, at the restrooms and at the maintenance facility and in the clubhouse itself. And the issue that they pursued was the insurance company. And essentially, the insurance company said, basically what Tony just said, we didn't, we're cheap, we didn't spend the money on going to a lawyer, they said the same thing, one, you train, and two, you maintain.
Yeah.
And with that, didn't have any issues whatsoever, so I think that we probably at least check with our insurance people to verify that they, they're going to say the same thing, but I see no reason why we wouldn't go on ahead and do it, with the exception of the school, we put them on notice that pursuant to what you have furnished us, it's your responsibility to provide those, even if it's duplicative, facilities during your events.
So are you, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chairman, I feel strongly that we should go ahead and, and pursue this item and purchase these AEDs. I know for a fact that two board members sitting here have taken, have taken the training within the last few months, and at least 10 of our staff have taken it. The training is much less valuable if you don't have AEDs to, to, to help a person that's in distress. You may have read in the newspaper that, about that gentleman who was playing handball or something.
Racquetball.
Racquetball.
That's correct.
He was probably saved as a result of AEDs and a teammate that knew how to operate them until the professional EMS arrived. And you also may remember that about two years ago, the person actually expired in this room. I'm not saying that he would have been saved if we'd had him, but I can't say that he wouldn't either. Anyway, I feel strongly that we should, that we should pursue this.
And what are we talking, a pool, this building, and?
I think the pool in this building is
Soccer.
Soccer.
You want to put one in the
Yeah, I think we should have one, one, the school's a separate issue, we have things that are functions over there that are not school-related.
Does everyone have
Just a Christmas party, for instance.
Does everyone have access to the building over there?
Well, again, that gets back to, if the board decides to acquire them, that's when we would come back with a policy as to acquisition, placement, maintenance and training.
Okay.
And we'd work with the insurance carrier, back when this issue first arose, we had conversations with the insurance carrier and they didn't have any real issues, again, subject to training, maintenance and placement.
Bill, if you make the motion, I'll second it.
I was going to support Bill, as a former nurse, I know that how important that is and I have seen it save lives, so to me, it is a, something that should be put in here.
Are you going to make the motion to proceed?
Sure, I'll make the motion to proceed.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And what we'll try to do is, I'll work with Chris, see if we can come back to the next board meeting, but more realistically, maybe the first meeting in December, just to have a good conference of plan, as well as getting with Mike in his communications with Gateway Charter about them being required to have those facilities.
One for, excuse me, are you finished?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I'm sorry.
One further thing, Madam Chairman, if I may, I'm assuming that the district manager knows which of the staff took that training and is carrying a certificate with them, is that so? So if you, if you don't, you can find out, right?
Oh, yeah, I would have a real good idea if it's down in New Haven.
Okay, so we ought to, we ought to know who our, who our certified staff are.
And Tony, as, as we're looking, or Chris, as we're looking about the policy, we can, we can manage our own training and policy within what is district jurisdiction. When we're looking at the charter school, even the leagues, we probably need to have some conversation on whether they would either opt in for, for certification, I don't know if we can require them.
Under a field usage agreement, arguably we could with the leagues, which is up for discussion today.
Well, would that also, I mean, there would
Gateway Charter, it was less, it has more of a casual, is not a formal agreement, I believe.
Well, my point is, that's, I mean, there's, if you're mandating that someone else facilitate a potential life-saving or could be in the other direction, that's, that poses additional liability and risk on, on the individuals that are, that are assuming that responsibility. So I think we need to at least have some conversation.
Well, conversations, and they may already have that program in place, because if they're engaging in sanctioned activities at their facility or elsewhere, I'm sure they, because the protocol's required, but I just rechecked the statute, they, they
Yeah, my point is, let's, let's have conversation with the league leaders and the high school before we come to a conclusion on what we're going to mandate.
We'll come back, okay, as part of what, that we come back with, well, because Michael's had conversations with the league sponsors and we'll have those between now and the first meeting in December and report back to the board at that time with recommendations. Good point.
I, I just don't want to make it look like to them that we're accepting their liability. If they're supposed to have it, then you do it.
But we're also telling them, you know, potentially, that they have to maybe assume some risk and responsibility that they may not be comfortable with.
Well, then they may not want to use our facilities.
That's what I was going to say, you may not want to use the facility.
I'd like to hear back from staff about placement
Their pockets deeper than ours.
One over at the soccer field, because you need to make sure that it's available to the leagues over there, but the worst thing that I think we could do is put one over there and, and then have it locked up to where nobody can get to it.
Well, that's exactly
That's a big problem.
You almost have to put two, one in the back concession and one
And that's exactly the basis for one lawsuit in Kyler County I'm familiar with, because I know the deceased wife, I mean, she was a former county commissioner, her husband died on a basketball court, like he was like 42 years old, and they ran to get the AED device and it was in a locked cabinet, nobody had the key. So that formed the basis for litigation, so that it has to be accessible, but it gets back to use or attempt to use to be afforded the protection, so that's part of what we'll come back with for a policy.
Because you can't just have it out in the open.
Once you, once you see the details, then you can decide how you want to proceed. But at a minimum, I think from the standpoint, the district office is in the pool complex.
Definitely, I would say those two.
Okay, but we'll come back with overall policy and then you can decide.
The kind of lock that I've seen and used is the one that breaks, but it's locked and it, you just have to, well, it does break easily, but, so that's
And again, we'll explore, we'll come back with what's available and once you have a proposed policy, that'll detail that. Thank you. I think it was, the vote was taken, I think?
Yes.
Oh, the next item is
The girls' stuff. The Girl Scout.
The Girl Scout Building is an update to what you have in your packet. I've heard, I know some of the board members may be aware, some may not be, that I provided another update to Mr. Ellis last week with regards to the efforts that have been made by the district to obtain the PUD Amendment. And I'll just hand this out to you. This was, and I don't believe I emailed it to you, I may have or may not have. This is an email of October twenty-seventh to Mr. Ellis, where I advised Mr. Ellis, who's the attorney for the Girl Scouts, that we had the disclaimer and release signed by Lee County, and they're getting ready to record it. And as to the PUD Amendment, we've had no further communications with Lee County, no additional letters of no objection, and that Pinecrest Community Association voted to not provide a letter of no objection to the PUD Amendment. And Michael, I assume by that also, maybe for the record, that the residents, Mr. Draper, Mr. Cecil, and those, Ms. Baker, at least, have not provided letters of no objection. Is that correct? And they, and you're not planning on providing them?
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager, the, there were several residents who did not provide the letter of no objection. We had revised some of the documents, the, like, the church, and one of the residents provided an updated letter, but I believe Ms., one of the residents was willing, she was in the process of moving, and never provided the updated letter. And then two of the other residents adjacent to the proposed Girl Scout Building acquisition would, would not sign it. I believe Mr. Banks was also at that meeting, so I think he could kind of address the sentiment of the Pinecrest HOA.
So, out of the four, we've got consent from one, one is selling or in transit, and then there's two that have not.
As far as property and residence, in addition to the association, correct?
Yeah, in addition, residents only, that's out of the four.
And to take the quick route through the county, it had to be a hundred percent.
Correct.
So, right now, it's DOA.
And from the standpoint of the administrative amendment process, requires letters of no objection.
From all.
From all, including the association, correct?
Correct.
So, then that means that we either go through the tedious process of filing and waiting up to maybe a year?
Right, we, we would then have to go through the complete rezoning process that would take somewhere between nine months and, and one year.
Or we look at other options.
Yeah, I mean, just to say that up, I wasn't disappointed with, with the understatement with, with some of the board on this, this issue. And it seemed, in the beginning, it was about whether, who owned the roads. I mean, there was probably a fifteen-minute conversation around who, who owns the road, as opposed to whether zoning, whether the zoning-
Whether uses was a problem.
Yeah, whether they would accept zoning, you know, the acceptance of the zoning. And then it really, when they started talking about the actual acceptance of the zoning, I felt like there were several, several board members that were operating or acting more on what their personal position was on whether the district should be purchasing the building, as opposed to the overarching decision on whether zoning would be accepted or not accepted. And then there was also conversation on whether, in that process, whether the Pinecrest HOA would relinquish oversight as part of the, the Girl Scout Building being in their HOA, which I didn't know if that-
It's not in their HOA.
Yeah.
Well, that's-
Not in their HOA.
That was part of the conversation, is whether or not they would allow, if the district was in that building, to release us or them from their HOA governance or oversight, which was really confusing throughout the whole, whole thing. But, I mean, to kind of summarize, I felt like the conversation was more geared towards whether it was the right decision for the district to purchase the building, as opposed to making a determination on whether the zoning change was acceptable by the HOA. And I thought that was a little misguided.
But at the end of the day, the key issue is whether or not they provide the letters of no objection from all the adjacent zoning proprietors to go through the administrative process. And as an aside, my recollection of the title work, when I reviewed it, I did not see any exception for any deed restrictions applicable to the Pinecrest neighborhood. I would have raised, I mean, I do not. But the decision point for the board is, if you recall, included in the agenda package is a Second Amendment to the contract, that we have until November sixth to be satisfied as to the PUD Amendment issue and the disclaimer issue. The disclaimer issue has been resolved. I mean, that's, the title company is happy with that, and I'm happy with that. The PUD Amendment, though, it requires that, it has to be, we have up until November sixth to obtain a PUD Amendment satisfactory to us submitting the PUD to allow, as a permitted use, the use of the property for governmental office administrative complex. And so, the choice for the board is, is to authorize a notice of termination due to the inability to satisfy that particular contingency or cure that particular issue, or see if the seller's willing to wait another year minimum, and then we go through the full-blown process.
We terminate, what's the dollar value that we have in escrow that we have subject to loss?
Well, there's a fifteen thousand dollar deposit, and I would argue that it's refundable because of this cure period.
Because of, because the-
The cures, the defect not being cured. Now, that does not mean they would not dispute that, and so, they may, you know, once the demand is made for the return of the deposit, they may argue a number of reasons why they believe we're not entitled to have it back. And if there's litigation over that, it goes in the county court because of the dollar amount. It's fifteen, it's not over fifteen thousand dollars, but you never know what people will do.
I thought, moving forward, we kept making sure that we weren't going to lose that.
Once again, we were taking the steps to engage in the necessary due diligence, but that does not mean that they can assert that we did not. You can, and they can try to argue that we did not. In fact, we were giving them the weekly reports and showing with the con- It's never a guarantee that somebody's going to say, yes, take it, and, you know.
And it is-
I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm confident that we would be successful. I can't guarantee that, but I'm comfortable and confident that we have done what we needed to do, to try to attain and resolve those two items during the cure periods. They may dispute that, and if they wish to, then we have interplay to action in the county court.
I think it's time to move to Plan B.
No, I'm not so sure about that. If you mean, forget it.
No, Plan B. Look at other options.
In other words, cancel this.
Cancel this.
Is what he's saying.
What are you saying?
The purchase of the-
Cancel the purchase of the building. We, we cannot meet the county requirement, and going through that one-year process, we've got issues here that we got to get resolved, and there's no sense screwing around with this.
And Tony, let me-
What you're, excuse me, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Why do you say it's a one-year process?
I've not been involved at all in the zoning aspect. Tyler and Michael were. It's because you file the submittal, you go to the hearing examiner, the hearing examiner makes a recommendation at a public hearing to the Board of County Commissioners, and then the county commissioners take action. That's the timeframe that Michael and Tyler have obtained. Like I said, I've not been involved in that zoning process at all. Is that correct, Michael, or?
I, I remembered that conversation, Mike, but in this case, please correct me if I'm wrong. We are muddling around in this thing because Lee County made a mess of the zoning with a building that's just been sitting on that property for twenty years or more.
They approved a mess that the developer created.
I'm not, that-
Is that right or not?
I won't characterize it that way. They allowed the construction and use of a building that now they are, back in the nineties, that they're now saying it's in a no-man zone, I guess, basically. Is that a fair statement, Mike?
It's not, it's not zoned?
For the use that's currently there.
And remind me again, what is the, I want to-
Let Mr. Guy finish, please.
When I was in the governmental business, if I threatened under the table to embarrass a governmental agency, if they wouldn't move our petition to the front of the room and hear it right away, they would, in likelihood, especially if the seller, prospective seller, was with us, holding our hand, they would in all, for almost every time, move our petition to the front of the room and hear it right away without your one-year business. I think that's the, the, the position that we ought to take, and, and try and move this thing forward expeditiously, because this whole thing, there's a mess that the county made, and they're hurting two or more parties. Thank you.
Now, the, we, what we have is, we're pushing up against a deadline that we had asked with the Realtor in the Girl Scout.
November sixth is the drop date.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but the hearing examiner has to, is going to be contacting the same people that we have to try to get these letters of no objection, and they have a right to go to the hearing examiner's meeting when this is heard and voice their opposition.
The county sends out letters to everyone within a certain radius of the property. Those people are informed of the hearing, they're welcome to come and speak, but at that point, it becomes what allowable uses are. They might have objections, but at the end of the day, that party and that property will be rezoned with several of the items that are, that are on that, that list, that they're not going to be happy with.
Yeah, I guess what Michael was saying, from the perspective of, right now, the residents and adjacent proprietors have a veto power over the easier process, because they have not-
Right, right.
Signed the letter of no objection. When you get to the hearing examiner, you have to have substantial competent evidence to make a recommendation as to whether or not the zoning district should be changed. The fact of, I don't want an office building, is not a good enough reason. I don't like that building, I don't want the, I, I think they will use it for all these other horror story reasons, is not a good enough reason. Or I think there will be increased traffic, I think there will be, they have to have articulatable facts that the hearing examiner will look at and listen to from experts, planners, possibly traffic engineers, and others saying, and, and the county staff appears to believe that the change in the zoning district and uses is appropriate, and so I would assume that they would make a similar recommendation to the hearing examiner, that the property be rezoned and the district be, you know, be modified to accommodate this use. So, it's not that the people won't be heard, they'll be heard, but they can't, it has to, it has to be competent substantial evidence that they provide, other than, I don't like it, or it doesn't fit in. They have to show how it's inappropriate.
Right, so what is the-
So, I guess the question is whether or not, if we have a favorable recommendation from staff, and if the hearing examiner, and if nothing else happens down the road, it makes a favorable recommendation, if it goes to the county commission, the people can still go across to the county commission.
Because a year seems like a long time. Surely, this could be done sooner than that, or is that common?
Remember, it's a quasi-judicial process. You submit your petition, you have so much time to be found substantially complete to, with your submittal, then they schedule you with the hearing examiner, which is months and months and months in advance, because there's already so many people ahead of you. And then you have your hearing, the hearing examiner then has, I think, forty-five to sixty days to write their report. Then after the report is written, it is then scheduled before the Board of County Commissioners, which is another several months down the road. So, it's not a quick process. It's a very long process, it's time-consuming.
If I'm hearing Bill, Bill's saying we go the political route. My question is, who do you go?
Well, here's the problem.
Who do you go to, to get that decision reversed?
Well, here's, there's no decision to be reversed. Again, if we have to go to the formal process to go to the county commission ultimately, the county, Lee County, uniquely among counties in Florida, has an anti-contact, anti-lobbing issue, a prohibition on any zoning and land use quasi-judicial matters. So, once, basically, once the game is afoot, as they would say-
Well, that's what-
The game is afoot, then they are not able to participate in the ex parte outside the board hearing communications concerning the zoning application.
And Tony, can you remind me again, how is it zoned today?
Let's see, I have to go-
Do you remember, Mike?
I don't, it's, it's actually kind of fuzzy.
Let's see, I have to, I mean, try to repeat, I did not bring the entire file. Bear with me just a minute.
It was zoned as a Girl Scout building, and use only.
Well, no, and to Mr. Guy's point, what's interesting is, those deed restrictions, as I said, that were there at the time, Lee County blessed the deed restriction, because Lee County had enforcement rights under the deed restriction. So, that's one of the documents that we got rid of, was those deed restrictions that WCI had disclaimed the interest in them, but Lee County arguably still had enforcement rights. And so, that, that was resolved. And so, it is kind of interesting that, and again, let me see, Tyler's report, I'm trying to think of, I can find the memorandum on that.
Why don't we do a DBA as the Girl Scouts Community Development District, GS, CDD?
I mean, if, if someone were to come in off the street and not do their due diligence and not, not deeper, they could have purchased the building, operated under the existing zoning, even though it wasn't appropriate.
The county would not allow you to do so.
Well, the problem, what happens is typically, and Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when you go, when you, if you're operating a business, opening an office, you need to get a business tax receipt. It used to be called occupational license.
Right.
And typically, local government cities, counties have a zoning verification process. They want to know that where you're going to conduct your business is properly zoned for that business. So, if I want to operate a tattoo parlor, and I, there's a prohibition within five hundred feet of a church, say, and I, and I go to get my business tax receipt to open up a tattoo parlor next door to a church, the zoning folks should say, you can't do it because of this prohibition and distance. So, what should happen is, if someone else were to buy it, and they were to get their business tax receipt application, the county staff would say, ooh, you can't, because it doesn't fit.
It's not zoned.
Arguably, I mean, and again, I'm trying to pull up the prior materials as to the current zoning.
Does that sound like an unlawful taking to you?
I'm not sure I can answer that question of whether or not, no, because the county is allowed that, the prior use for years. The county could assert that that use of that property has been abandoned by virtue of not being utilized for X period of months or years.
Well, if I were the director of the Girl Scout of Sarasota County, I'd, I'd allege that the county or somebody was stealing my property, which is-
Inordinately burdening it or taking the property, and I will let them make that argument.
Huh?
I will let them make that argument. I'm trying to find, I'm sorry, I can't retrieve the materials.
Back to Bill's original point, is there, in your opinion, is there any alternative ways to escalate this process, other than going directly through the hearing, or is there a way to-
I've not been involved at all in the zoning aspect, Michael and Tyler have, and my understanding, Mike's got the timeframe based upon his conversation with county staff, correct?
Right, county staff said that they, they wouldn't allow utilization of the, the building for what we want to do without either going through, A, the administrative process or the full rezoning process.
And they're fully aware of how it's zoned today, and they didn't have any consideration or any interest in being-
They're trying to correct this into the past.
They're trying, they're trying to cover their you-know-what, that they've got a mess, and they're, they're wanting us to clean up their mess for them. Has anybody talked to any of the county commissioners, because I'm very willing to?
Sounds like what he just said is-
Well, they may not be able to, that's the problem. I have to go back and double-check their anti-lobbing ordinance, but, you know, whether or not lobbying can occur in administrative process versus a full-blown county commission process, I'm not sure. I mean, that's-
Because then they have to, when you go before the county commissioner, one, one of the things is, they ask if you've had prior communication.
Either disclose-
And prior what?
Prior communication.
Well, during, but in fact, during the zoning process, if it goes to the board, they may not be able to have any conversations.
Or they have to disclose.
And I'm not sure with that point, I'm not sure where that, that line is, where they can't cross over, in other words, right now, we don't have an application in, but we've been working with county staff. Is that sufficient to trigger Lee County's anti-lobbing or anti-contact ordinance? I have not double-checked that. But I do know that once an application is in, they are not supposed to have any communication. Except with staff, I think with staff, they can have it with staff, but not with the applicants.
I'm back to square one. I think we go to Plan B, drop this thing and look at other options. I don't want to wait a year, that's for sure.
There is other commercial property available.
Well, yeah, we've got property right there, right next to us, and not mess with it, and then we don't have to go through this. Build our own building right next door.
You make it sound so simple.
Considering this, Bill, it is simple.
In this county, nothing's simple.
We could put trailers out there.
Yeah, lots of luck getting those approved, too. Yeah, lots of luck getting those approved too. But anyway, I, I see no future in going down this road with the Girl Scouts. There's no see it happening. Too many obstacles in the way, and nobody's going to turn and bail us out.
I think at this point in time, you know, for the Girl Scouts to sell this build and, building, they need to cure this.
They want to sell it, they want to sell it.
They're not going to be able to.
Okay, I'll go out. I'll make the motion that we, effective November 7th.
Well, it'd have to be earlier than that, the drop dead date's November 6th, so.
Okay, November 6th, I was giving it as all day to the 6th.
Yeah, and it would be authorized, the, terminating the contract with the Girl Scouts pursuant to the, to the inability to satisfy the cure requirements involving the PUD.
Okay, terminate the agreement then effective November 6th, and we immediately drop this alternative of the Girl Scout building for office.
I'll second for discussion.
I like Bill's idea, but it doesn't sound like it's going to work.
Well, and my discussion point is?
You don't, you don't know that it'll work it up, you don't give it a shot.
Well, I, I think my point of discussion is, we, we terminate the contract because we don't, we're not going to be able to meet the, the requirements.
That part of, that part of the motion I could possibly agree with. It was the rest of it that I did not agree with.
There's a, a second component, is do we continue to pursue while we are looking at other options? Because it could take us, it could take us a year to find other, other property, or if we decide not to do anything, or if we decide to build or expand here, whatever. It may take us additional time. And something miraculous may happen, and we might be able to fast-track this deal, which when, which at that point, we resurrect, you know, the deal. I'm not willing to quit on it.
I'm with you.
So.
You know, the Girl Scouts are a United Way organization, and the United Way's got all kinds of swag in the county. They raise, I don't know how many millions of dollars. If we, if we play this right, I mean...
But we're not, we're not under, under, what do you call it before, below board, from, under the table? It's, it's on the surface now. The only thing I don't understand, and I just can't figure it out, is why are we doing all this when they want to sell it? Why aren't they going to the county commissioners?
If your motion, if your motion is correctly worded, that's where it would go, back to. And by the way, Mr. Attorney, Constitution of the United States allows the citizens to petition their government.
But local governments have the ability to adopt anti-lobbing ordinances, so. I mean, and I guess, they would argue that they can petition because people can show up at the public hearing, but you can't do it outside the public hearing. Just briefly on the zoning, I pulled up the...
I shouldn't spend any more money on this, it's a waste of time.
I pulled up the Tetra Tech memorandum on zoning, and I think it's from April, if I'm not mistaken. And it references, April 25th of this year, it says zoning. Tetra Tech has had several discussions with the Lee County zoning department regarding this parcel, and the summary of our conversations are provided below. The zoning district, according to the original maps for Gateway, had this parcel in the quote, "public school park district," close quote. However, the zoning resolution never defined that title as an actual district and what the permitted uses of that classification would be. This is a discrepancy that commonly occurs throughout Gateway and is not unique to this parcel. Basically, the graphical maps that were prepared for the original DRI and the original zoning resolution didn't match up and has caused issues ever since. The zoning department's stance is that although they're not objecting to the parcel's use as an office admin complex, it was never formalized for use as that. Basically, the parcel currently sits in a zoning quote, "no man's land," close quote. As such, the zoning department is requiring a PUT amendment. PUT amendments can be done both administratively and through a public hearing. And then they go on to talk about the, what would be required for the administrative process.
So, this public school park, could you house your Parks and Rec administration?
I, I don't know that, I can't answer that question, that's a county staff question, I couldn't.
We're not a public school.
No, but it says public school slash park.
I, I don't know, I mean, we'd have to get conversations with the county planners on that one.
We can operate Parks and Rec out of there until we complete the zoning process.
Go on the motion.
I, I have, and I know other people are going to have discussion on this. We had to actually kind of twist arms to get the Girl Scouts to agree to extend this timeframe to November 6th. And that was with the idea that we were going to be able to get the letters of no objection, which despite our best efforts, we just haven't been able to do it. I'm of the opinion at this point, we're not going to be able to purchase that building without getting this zoning changed. So there's no point in us pursuing this. If they can get the zoning changed, then I'd say they can come back to us and say, "Do you still want to buy it?"
Now, I would change my motion to allow that. They want to chase the goose, let them chase it, but in the meantime, we look at other options, not just sit here and do nothing.
But I don't know if it needs to be part of the motion, because that's something they can do on their own. We can just say, tell them that.
Well, I need to change my motion because my other motion was just to terminate it.
I don't see anything changing, and we've got two business days, two true business days between now and the 6th.
Let, let them do it.
And I don't see anything changing between now and the 6th, I really don't.
Oh, I don't either. But they're, they're going to come to the realism that we're not in the game anymore of spending our money chasing this goose. It didn't get us anywhere. Let them go do it and see if they can pursue something. In the meantime, we're not going to build a building over here or anyplace else or rent another building in the next thirty days.
No.
So, what's, what's going to hurt?
So what's your motion?
I would withdraw terminating it totally, just as far as us doing anything else. We look at other options and let them do whatever they want to do.
After the 6th, we lose our money.
If we don't terminate it as of November 6th, for the failure to achieve the satisfactory PUT amendment, then the deposit is...
Whatever we have to do to save the fifteen thousand or attempt to save the fifteen thousand, notwithstanding the fact that somebody over there could try to come after us, but we've got some arguments on our side.
The zoning issue is not, is out of our control.
What I would, what I would suggest is the motion should be framed that the district, despite its best efforts and due diligence, during the PUT amendment cure period, was not able to obtain a PUT amendment from Lee County satisfactory to the district, amending the PUT to allow the uses outlined in the section 702 of the amended contract, and that therefore we, district would terminate the contract.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah.
And request it to return the deposit.
And then at the same time, we, while we're doing that, we look at other options or start investigating other options. But let, let them...
That kind of goes without saying.
And then this part even as a sub...
Do I have a second for, on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, okay. Kathy flared it seconded it. Do we need to withdraw the previous?
Yes, just for clarification.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
You withdraw your second on the first?
I do.
Thank you. So that we have a correct?
Clean motion.
Clean motion on the table. And Kathy flared it seconded that. Is there any further discussion, anything else anybody wants to add?
I just want to add one thing, in, sorry Kathy, are you talking?
I just wanted it stated again, so, because I was writing it, and I didn't get it all.
I didn't write it down.
Okay, thank you.
I think we should go back to, basically, it's authorized, due to the fact that the district was not able to, by November 6th, 2017, during the PUT amendment cure period, was not able to obtain a PUT amendment from Lee County satisfactory to the district, amending the PUT to allow its permitted use, use of the property for governmental office slash administrative complex and authorizing termination of the agreement. Notice be sent with a request for return of the deposit.
Yes.
For that reason and any other reason in the contract.
And my last piece of discussion is to send a subsequent letter that says, you know, we conducted our best effort to do the zoning.
That's separate though.
Yeah, I would suggest that they have this one motion, and then, and I can put in there that, you know, it's our best efforts and due diligence, which is, and they may dispute that, but I believe we did, in my opinion. And then I think, we always have a conversation with them about it. And again...
Future opportunity if the, if they complete the zone.
I mean, I think it was pretty clear, that, I mean, when we extended this, it was really pretty clear that, you know, this was the deadline to try and get it cured.
And we achieved the disclaimer, so we did some cleanup for them. I mean, that disclaimer to Lee County interest takes care of that title objection. So they have that at no expense to them.
Well, the one thing the Girl Scouts got to realize is that it doesn't make any difference whether it's us or anybody else.
Exactly.
They're going to go through this same problem again.
And I've had, and I've had that conversation many times.
So.
I'm going to call the questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And I will have a conversation with their attorney, and I think, you know, with regards to what actions they may take in the future.
We would consider.
Madam Chairman, I have a couple items, if I may, just some handouts for future board discussion. On the FPL easement linear park, I thought it was getting close to the acreage issue, now I think it's more of a bike path issue, so I was briefly talking with Mr. Tinkle about that. So I, and it got a little bit more compounded when we had the request from Lennar, WCI, for the district to accept title to the FPL easement. And so there are a number of issues yet to be resolved on that aspect, so I'll come back to the board.
You done?
Oh, no, for now, briefly, I have a, last meeting, Mr. Tinkle handed out a list of delinquent availability fees.
Got that.
And what I did, I prepared a memo on one aspect, on Santa Luz, just to hand out today and not have...
These are those utility accounts.
Yeah, utility account. This isn't for discussion today, it's not on the agenda, but I think it might be on a future agenda.
Was this a paper you passed out?
Yes, it's a memo just on the Santa Luz. And once again, not for discussion or reading today, but for the future.
Okay, well, I'm not only interested in Santa Luz, I'm worried about the other twenty-nine thousand.
Oh, I understand, but there's others I wasn't involved with, and so that's something that Chris and I will get with Leslie and Mike in the future. But this is just the, my participation was primarily Santa Luz. Pelican Reserve, the golf cart issue, I drafted a memo, had some conversations with Mr. Meese, I revised my memo and sent it to Mr. Meese. So we should be wrapping that up as far as my recommendations to P-PAC within the next week. And whether or not I get darts thrown at me or not, we'll see. And that's all I have in this. Oh, briefly, on the FPL easement transaction, I think I sent everybody a copy of my letter to Mr. Mann, where I asked him to provide for the transfer and deed-in of the lands under the FPL easement, and I asked him for a number of documents, and he came back and said, "No, we're not going to give you a survey, no, we're not going to do this, no, we're not going to give you a commitment." And I then sent to him correspondence from 2010, where I asked for the same items and never received anything, and that, in my opinion, I would not recommend that the board accept title to this property without all these other documents and materials being provided for review. And I found out the derivation of the phrase "pig in a poke," by the way, so nothing else. A poke, a poke is, POQUE is French, like a bag, and so you buy, yeah, anyways. So that's, I've not heard any response back from Mr. Mann on my letter of October 27th, but...
What, what are the, what is the downside of us not having, if they're drawing the line in the sand on a survey? What is the downside of not having that survey?
We do not, we will not know where improvements on the easement encroach on other people's property. We won't know whether other improvements from other people's property encroach on the district, on the FPL easement area. And there might be objects and improvements on there that we are not aware of. I mean, we're buying a pig in a poke.
So it's...
Simple.
So it is a very reasonable request of ours to accept on a transfer a survey of this piece of...
Absolutely, yeah, by way of example, when Lee County required the transfer of the roads, they required a survey. And we, and once again, it's a commercially reasonable request. It's not, it's not like a lake.
But we, we need along with that, we've got this issue that's outstanding of parks. We have no idea, Tony and I started about before the meeting, we have no idea of what we've got. We're supposed to have something by the original DRI, two-hundred-and-thirty-six acres of parks. That was then amended three, four years later to a hundred-and-eighty-five acres. I dare anybody to try to find them. I have no idea where's it at, we may have land around here we don't even know about.
Well, it may not be us, again, it doesn't require, it goes to the district. But I mean, I'll also follow up with the monitoring from Lee County, because as you all know, when we asked WCI, and they refused, and no one required at the county level, that when they went through their amendments to the DRI development order, that they codify them as one document. And they have not, there are eleven different amendments to the original DRI.
Where do we go, because we're getting farther and farther away?
Community development, I believe, would be in, on N-WCI.
Who, okay, who do we, do we need to draft a letter on behalf of this board to Lee County? Asking for an explanation on this?
I'll make some phone calls.
Okay, but my deal is, is let's make, let's, let's wrap this up, this is ridiculous. We all know where that FPL easement is. Let's get this thing over here and make sure that they clean it up. Because they're, they're obviously doing it for some reason, because they're going out there right now and clear-cutting it and taking down all the, the exotics. So they're, they're, they're doing what we would expect them to do on that side. But on the other hand, if we have to have that survey, let's get the survey and explain to them why. And then the other part of it is, is if that whole thing, one-hundred-and-thirty-six, one-hundred-and-forty acres is a park, the whole thing, not just the, the trail, but the whole thing is a park, we need to know that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Right-of-way to right-of-way.
See, I, I don't think they're, I think they're two distinct, based upon recently reviewing some documents, I think they're two distinct items, because the DRI requires that they provide a paved bike path to extend the length of the FPL easement within the boundaries of the district. And it's the whole thing, and then there's, there's minutes from the board meeting from '93 where there's a discussion about the issue about whether or not, is the size of the linear park all the power easements? And some consultant said, "No." So I mean, it's, there are two different issues that need answers, I agree.
The issue is, we've got about a hundred acres missing from the last DRI.
I think it goes through your yard.
Is it tax exempt?
I will check on PUT, I'll call DRI and...
Let's check this and wrap this up, because they're, they're moving along doing their stuff, but they're going to have to get us the other bit up. I want to answer this park deal real quick, like.
But that also gets back to the issue about them want, they, WCI and Lennar, wanting the district to take title to that property under the FPL easement. And if there are deficiencies from compliance requirements for the DRI development order as to pavement, as to park areas, the district's going to be tagged with that. And that's another one of my concerns, that...
We have irrigation issues that are essential, that we have access to that FPL easement.
We have, but there, I think...
We need that easement over in our property, in our control.
No, but I believe also, we have an irrigation main, there were plans years ago for an irrigation main through that, I'm trying to remember.
A main going through, but that's not what I want to use it for. We got to be able to get rid of water.
You better, you better take into consideration that Mr. Jim back there has got people riding ATVs in that easement in it. We take it, then it's, then it's going to be our problem.
Hopefully not at three, hopefully not at three and five in the morning when we'd be discharging the water.
Two in the morning.
Two in the morning.
Yeah, and one of the difficulties, quite frankly, with the FPL easement is that FPL has the right-of-way use, they have their easements, and they have been, I'll call it persnickety in the past under certain circumstances. And there are, there's one covenant of use agreement that's in their public record that limits what can be done. There's another covenant of use agreement that's referenced in a recorded document, but it's not recorded, so I'm trying to get a copy of that, which also will explain, have better ideas to the constraints that can answer that question, how we can, if we wish, to discharge water for irrigation purposes.
Anyway.
So that, and again, that gets back...
Let's get the answers to these questions.
That gets back to what I, you know, would like to get from WCI and Lennar.
And are you finished, Tony?
Yes, I'm so sorry, yes.
Couple of other ones for Tony. Has anybody heard from Portline?
I've not.
Now, have you cashed a check?
Didn't check.
Steven, have you?
I haven't checked, but I can't.
Let's verify that. The last one is, we have the letter from Lennar, when are we going to discuss that?
I don't know, I mean, it's up to the board.
Since it's a legal issue, are we going to do it now, or?
It's not on the agenda.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't want to kick, after reading that letter, I don't want to kick that down the road.
And that really would be part of Casella wanting to, correct?
If you want to handle it, then that's fine, it just, it needs to, it needs to be discussed.
And copies should be made available for the public if they want to, kind of, who else has or does not have that letter.
That's everything I have for Tony.
I'm going to request a five-minute break. Be back in five.